All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I see we are now at seven o'clock. So I'm going to call this public hearing to order. My name is Mike Little, Mayor for the District of North Vancouver, and so the pleasure falls to me to welcome you all here to this meeting. This meeting is being held in a hybrid fashion, which means that members of the council, public and staff can participate in the meeting either in person or virtually. And so we do have councillor Hanson joining us virtually tonight. And councillors Forbes and back have expressed regrets. They're not able to participate in tonight's meeting. That means that if they wish to be able to participate in the vote when the item comes back for second and third reading, they'll have to avail themselves of the video or the minutes and get up to speed before they they're permitted to vote in the process. But right now you do have five members of council that are participating in tonight's meeting. These meetings are a quasi judicial process for us, which means I've got a script to go through. And so if you'll just bear with me for a few minutes, the order run of the evening is I'm going to go through the script and then I'm going to hand it over to our staff for their presentation and then we'll get underway with presentations from the public. Again, we have a sign up list that has already been started, but we exhaust the speakers list. So anybody who is present for the meeting can still add their name and add their their discussion points. After that point, I'll go over all of the regulations as I read through the script here. But don't worry, if your name's not on the list already, there still will be an opportunity for you to add your name as we go forward. Okay, so we're here tonight for the outdoor customer service area patios amendment to the zoning by law and business by law. As advertised, we're holding a public hearing for amendments to the zoning by law in a public meeting for amendments to the business license by law in relation to the outdoor customer service areas, patios. As the two bylaws are closely related, we will be holding the public hearing and public information meeting concurrently. This means anyone who feels that their interest is affected by either by law will be afforded the opportunity to speak. The public hearing is being convened pursuant to section four six four of the Local Government Act and the public meeting is being convened pursuant to section of fifty nine of the Community Charter. This meeting being held in a hybrid format, meaning there's a combination of in person for electronic participation by some or all members of council staff and the public. The chair has established the following rules for this hearing. We will go through the established speakers list. At the end of the speakers list, the chair may call for other speakers not on the speakers list. You will have five minutes to address council for first time. Begin your remarks to council by stating your name. After everyone who wishes to speak is spoken once, speakers will then be allowed one additional five minute opportunity. Any additional presentations will only be allowed at the discretion of the chair. Please do not repeat information from your previous presentations and ensure your comments remain focused on the bylaws under consideration this evening. If you've provided a written submission, there's no need to read it as it will have already been seen by the council. You may summarize or briefly reiterate the highlights of your submission, but ensure your comments pertain to the bylaws under consideration at the hearing. All members of the audience are asked to be respectful of one another's as diverse opinions may be expressed. Council wishes to hear everyone's views in an open and impartial forum. Some important notes to consider on public hearings. Council is here to listen to the public, not to debate the merits of the bylaws. Council may ask clarifying questions. The clerk has a binder containing documents and submissions related to the bylaws which council has received and which you are welcome to review. This is available at the table next to the door and online at dmv.org/agenda. Everyone at the hearing will be provided an opportunity to speak. If necessary, we will continue the hearing on a second night. At the conclusion of the public meeting, and I'm getting a little bit of feedback, I think that's my own system here. At the conclusion of the public input, council may request further information from staff, which may or may not require an extension of the hearing. Or council may close the hearing, after which council should not receive further and new information from the public. Finally, please note that this hearing is being held via Zoom and recorded in accordance with the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act. Council, just a note, so council at certain points along the evening is allowed to ask clarifying questions of staff. And so a discussion group within the teams will be sent as a notification to everybody to be able to write your questions into. And we'll pause the meeting for an opportunity for staff to give a response at a later point. At this point, I'm going to turn the meeting over to the clerk to introduce the bylaws.
Thank you, your worship. As noted by the mayor, this is an opportunity for the public to comment on both proposed bylaws. The first bylaw, District of North Vancouver zoning by law amendment eight six zero four. This bylaw proposes to amend the zoning by law to allow outdoor customer service areas in compliance with regulations for design and operation, including requirements for principal premises, properties of budding and single family residents, floor area, parking, permanent structures, climate control areas, enclosures and temporary structures. Bylaw eight six zero four also updates language in the zoning by law, requiring that the property use complies with section four thirteen of the zoning by law. Adds a reference to outdoor customer service areas to section seven seven zero dot zero four accessory uses. And updates the definition of outdoor customer service area, licensed lounge and licensed lounge use in part two, which is interpretation. Business license amendment by law eight six one two. This bylaw proposes to amend the business license by law to allow outdoor customer service areas on private property in compliance with requirements, including license application, submission of detailed plans and other information required by the inspector, compliance with all municipal bylaws and requirements of other like other authorities having jurisdiction and permission of the property owner. Bylaw eighty six twelve also updates the definition of outdoor customer service area and adds terms and conditions for obtaining, modifying, continuing to hold or renewing a license. Your worship, those are the two bylaws under consideration this evening. There is a presentation by staff.
Just before we go to the presentation, councillor Mury, do you have a clarifying question in the process?
Just on the running of the public meeting and running of the public meeting and the hearing simultaneously, we haven't done that before, I don't think. So if you had a public meeting and people were speaking under that premise and then we closed the hearing.
We actually have done it before. We've done it where not often, but there definitely have been situations where we've had public hearings where obviously the subject matter was close enough that it made sense to have them run concurrently. The the challenge in our system is once you close the the first discussion, you it would be very hard for you to hold the second discussion without violating the closure regulations. And so what makes the most sense for us from a from a process standpoint is to run them concurrently. They both open together, they both close together, and all of the comments, whether they be related to either of the two bylaws will be recorded for public inspection afterwards.
So I would just make one comment to your explanation, Mayor Little. I think it's been maybe once before. I don't I don't actually recall. It would be interesting to know when we did it. But if you had a public meeting and then you listened to sort of the discourse through the presentation and discussion and went home and sort of thought about it, you may come up with sort of other scenarios that you may want to provide to the public hearing. And then because they're both running concurrently on the same night, you don't really have that opportunity. I understand we've run some outreach and and community connection. But I I caution that I don't think that this is something that we want to do very often, if ever again.
Only when it's when they directly parallel each other. I think it's so you're right. It's absolutely. It is rare that it occurs that way. Okay, so I believe you had finished your presentation. So now I'm going to ask staff to make their presentation approximately. How long is your presentation, Kevin?
Your worship, it's about fifteen minutes.
About fifteen minutes, okay. Go ahead.
Great, thanks. Good evening, your worship, members of council and members of the public. My name is Kevin Zhang, Senior Development Planner with the district. With me is my colleague and with me.
We'll get the house microphone up a little bit, but unfortunately, sometimes it feeds back into the microphone and so we'll just just go go ahead.
Great, thank you. And with me is my colleague Holly Adams. Tonight's public hearing is for amendment to the zoning by law and the business license by law. Both amendments are intended to introduce regulatory and process changes to outdoor customer service areas, commonly known as patios. Staff are excited to bring for these changes to tonight's public hearing because the work to proactively support businesses and increasing public ground vibrancy has been the result of council's direction, multi departmental staff effort and extensive public engagement. The presentation will take approximately fifteen minutes with slides presented both by Holly and myself. As a high level overview, the zoning by law is proposed to be amended to accommodate larger and more flexibly designed patios, introduce safety and design criteria, minimize impacts to surroundings and neighbors and improve accessibility for all users. The business license by law is also proposed to be amended to bring it into alignment with the new zoning by law regulations. With that in mind, Holly will now provide an overview on the guiding principles of this project and the timeline to date.
Thanks, Kevin. When staff are creating the proposed new program and pass forward, we kept these four guiding principles in mind. First, we want to continue to support our local businesses and recovering from the pandemic by increasing their options for patios and making the approval process simpler. We want to promote safe and accessible patios for our community while also minimizing potential negative impacts of patios to neighbors like nuisance and noise and impacts to our public infrastructure. And last, patios are a great way to enhance street and community vibrancy. So this encourages more activated lively streets and commercial centers. Next, I'll provide a bit of background on what's happened so far with the district's temporary outdoor business area program and where we're at now in the process. So in May of twenty twenty, which is the first point on the timeline, the provincial liquor and cannabis regulation branch implemented what it's calling temporary expanded service area authorizations. So this was in response to the COVID nineteen pandemic. And these authorizations allowed liquor license holders to temporarily expand their service areas, which satisfied the requirement for physical distancing that we had at the time. And about a month later, in June twenty twenty, the district quickly pivoted and implemented its temporary outdoor business area policy, which mirrored the provincial program and allowed larger patios to accommodate physical distancing. And we've had twenty seven businesses be approved to take advantage of the program. So both programs are extended a couple of times through the pandemic, but are both scheduled to end by March thirty first of this year. So that's the last point there on the timeline. And given the shifts in the last couple of years, an opportunity arose for the district to modernize and approve our regulations, guidelines and review procedures surrounding patios. And to get ahead of the March deadline, district council directed staff to explore how to accommodate the temporary patios moving forward and assist business owners. So part of this was staff engaging local businesses and the overall community in October and November of last year while drafting the new patio regulations. And these proposed changes are the subject of the public hearing tonight.
So the topic of patios is multifaceted. It sits at the nexus of land use, economic development and has impacts to residents district wide. This is why we took a multi-pronged holistic approach to the engagement and research regarding patios. The first arm of the targeted, sorry, the first arm is a targeted outreach to business owners who are currently temporary patio operators or who are interested in building one to get their feedback on what's working and what can be improved. The second was a broad ranging online survey which targeted the general public. The third, staff consider individual feedback received both from those in support and from those who raise concerns about the program. And lastly, staff conducted a review of best practices of other municipalities on this topic. And Holly will now highlight the results of the targeted business outreach and the public online survey.
The first component of engagement was in-person meetings with business owners, so restaurants, bars, breweries, cafes, et cetera. And this map display shows where most temporary patios are concentrated, and it's just for reference. For the business outreach, staff invited the business owners of the mentioned twenty seven approved temporary patios and any business who had shown interest in the program to meetings group by business location and business type. And to broadly summarize, businesses were supportive of the proposed changes, which will be highlighted later in the presentation. And the second arm of the engagement was an online public survey, which was advertised through physical signs concentrated in those areas with patios and commercial centers through social media and the district's website and the North Shore News, which generated significant interest with seven hundred responses in a period of three weeks. The two charts on screen show there's strong support for the survey from the survey respondents. So that's the green bar that's highlighted there to both patios in general and also support for larger patios. So similar to ones established during the pandemic. And these charts are reflected of all the responses we received. But if you filter for only those with a postal code in the district, the support the support is similar and even slightly higher. So full survey results have been included with the public hearing information. And for interest, three key reasons people mentioned for liking patios included for the vibrant scene pedestrian atmosphere. So increased social opportunity, liveliness, benefits such as increased walkability and safety, so eyes on the street for enjoyment of outside of nature. So beautiful views in the district to be enjoyed, fresh air, you can be closer to this nature. And for health reasons, so avoiding COVID nineteen and other illnesses, it's less noisy than inside, so it's easier to hear for some people and improve mental health. So for example, there's more opportunity to meet friends and family in a safe manner. And next, Kevin will highlight some of the details of the proposed changes.
Great, thanks, Holly. So after completing the business and public engagement, staff finalized changes to the zoning by law regulations and guidelines. Because existing patio regulations have been identified to be overly complicated and not conducive towards establishing successful outdoor patios, a number of changes were proposed for both the zoning by law and the business license by law. The details of these changes can be found in the report, but four key takeaways are that the first, the new set of regulations increased the permitted size of patios. So previously, patios could only be ten percent of the interior space of the establishment. New regulations bumped that up to fifty percent. However, it's important to note that there are limiting factors such as the available land on the property and that still having the need to provide parking for the main business. From recent experience, many of the current larger temporary patios have been operating successfully without issues. Second, the new rules permit more flexible configurations in terms of seating and tables. And this translates to the removal of specific table and chair limits, which were quite prospective in the old zoning battle. Third is the inclusion of accessibility requirements which did not exist before. As proposed, at least one table or twenty percent of the tables within an outdoor customer service area, whichever is greater, should be fully accessible. Lastly, the new regulations address potential public and neighbor impacts and safety issues by requiring screening, buffers and safety fence. To accompany these changes, staff have also drafted an outdoor customer service guide. And this guide is intended to be a comprehensive document for any business wishing to establish a new patio or modify an existing patio. And the guide contains key information such as eligibility criteria, design requirements, sample designs, process overview and a collection of key cost considerations. In essence, it'll be a one stop shop for business owners. Next, Holly will go over some of the proposed process changes.
In addition to regular regulatory changes, the district also aims to reduce the complexity and duration of patio approvals. The new streamline process is on to the left of the screen there. So what's improved exactly? So the first is consolidation with a business license. So what this means is if a business wants to establish a new patio, previously, they would have to make a standalone applications to do so. Now the patio proposal will be appended to the business license case. And that's a process that every business already has to do on a yearly basis. Second, there will be no additional fees triggered by adding a patio proposal to the business license. So the program was designed to accommodate simple patios and it's anticipated that the majority of patio applications will flow through this streamline process. However, there may be some complex scenarios where a business wants to do something more major to the site or the building or take up required parking, for example. And in those cases, additional approvals or permits would be required. So for example, a building permit or development variance permit for parking, something like this. And standard application fees will apply in those cases. Also note, if a patio is on district land, licensing fees would be applicable for leasing the public property. To support the streamlined process, the district has put together a dedicated cross departmental team to review these applications, ensuring quicker turnaround time. And we're also aware of the practical challenges faced by businesses. So staff are proposing a six month transition period, which would span from the end of March to end of end of September to accommodate businesses that are actively working on their proposal that require some extra time to complete construction and sort out what they'd like to do. So by September thirtieth, twenty twenty three, all temporary patios are expected to be transitioned to permanent patios in compliance with the amended zoning by law and business license by law. Lastly, staff will be sending a request to the LCRB to extend its authorizations to match the district's transition period. Now back to Kevin to address some items raised by council during the first reading.
Thanks, Holly. So on this slide, I'll summarize some of the items raised by council at first reading and the responses provided by staff. First, a question was raised regarding the operating hours of current temporary outdoor business area permit holders. So staff have looked into all twenty seven businesses. Liquor primaries like bars and pubs generally close at later times, with the latest being midnight. While food primaries, retail food with no alcohol and manufacturing all close by ten P M. This leads us to a second point raised by members of council. Should some patios become problematic in the neighborhood? How can council and staff set conditions related to these patios to ensure that they operate harmoniously within their neighborhoods? There are four tools in this toolbox, so to speak. First, for liquor primaries like bars and pubs, council is able to provide input and set conditions for endorsement prior to consideration by the LCRB. Neighbors are also able to provide comments through this process. Once issued by the province, every liquor license will have set hours of liquor service. Second, in addition to the liquor license, the district can establish conditions for the issuance, renewal and maintenance of a business license. And those conditions can include hours of operation, which will be tailored to that license at any point. Third, for any patio that is in part or completely on district property, the district has full discretion in terms of permitting the patio, setting operating conditions for the patio and requiring the removal of the patio. And fourth, our noise in the regulation by law and the good neighbor requirements in the zoning by law are enforced through the bylaw services department. Lastly, staff are aware that both members of council and members of the public may have questions about the future of patios and the use of public lands in Deep Cove. We appreciate the feedback received to date. And the district's engineering department have advised that both the livable Deep Cove project and the Deep Cove parking review are ongoing processes and that the use of public lands along Galant has not been finalized. An update will be provided to council by staff in due course in relation to these projects and how flex zones may be considered on Galant. In summary, the proposed changes to the patio regulations and review processes are aligned with numerous policies related to economic development and community vibrancy in the official community plan, in the OSB action plan and council directions into recent endorse into the recently endorsed economic development initiatives as part of the twenty twenty two to twenty twenty six corporate plan. Thank you, and that concludes our presentation.
Thank you very much. Kevin Zhang and Holly Adams. Okay, so at this point, we're going to move on to the public for their opportunity to speak. And so I have a speakers list, as I said at the beginning, that's already been started. It has four speakers on it. When we get to the end of that list, we're going to check in with anyone else present to see if they would like to speak. So at this point, I'm going to call on Anthea Yo, followed by John Pratt. Anthea, welcome. You're here in person. So if I can have you come up to the seats and get you started. Welcome. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
Okay, thank you, Mayor and council. I am, as most of you know, a resident of Depot and particularly the lower block of Galant, currently undergoing change. I overlook the proposed pedestrian patio combination area. I spend many hours on my balcony during the summer months observing the goings on at street level. I agree with permitting businesses to have patio space approximately eight to ten feet from the building, the length of their frontage where possible. In other words, from their physical building out and along their frontage where possible. I vehemently disagree, however, with allowing monopolistic, what I call satellite patios away from the buildings. In other words, in the middle of the flex areas or other district lands that we are developing. And there was a reason for this. And I think any seating in public space away from the building should be district provided and maintained for general use to allow the public to patronize any or all businesses without fear of being shooed away. In the Cove, I see businesses granted monopolistic use of a space that they fill with mishmash of tables and chairs, even gazebos and a mixture of corral fencing, rope, metal, wood, et cetera, giving an overall horrific view of our main street. In addition, most businesses didn't have enough clientele to fill their tables. Innocent tourists sat down only to be chased away. This told me there was not enough of supplied tables for public use that were not corralled by certain businesses. Most of the businesses supply takeout formula for and all their containers can be taken anywhere to eat with no monopoly needed for their seating. So in other words, they're supplying the public, no matter what, when they go to get anything, with takeaway type containers. There's only really one exception to that. That's the arms reach bistro, which is a totally different type of setup. And I figure should have different considerations. We need district created permanent U shaped seating with colorful planters surrounding for general public use so that older folk can rest up and the public can patronize any business. I noticed that most visiting families want foods from multiple outlets to satisfy their family tastes, not just one. Those standard picnic tables supplied during COVID are not senior or wheelchair friendly, plus they grew instantly unsanitary as they were not sealed or painted. These could be used as additional seating out in the flex space during the summer months, but a colorful coat of paint would be desirable. But we do need some permanent U seating and colorful planters, not just bland grass. Restaurants must get back to using their indoor space, not monopolize the outdoor area beyond their frontage allowed space. Honey's, for instance, has never reopened their interior and they have a large dining area left unused. We need color in the Cove. The plaza is a disappointing gray with very mundane linear bricks instead of patterned designs that would have lent some character. Please let us have hanging flower baskets, colorful planters, not just flags and light up at Christmas with lights that stay on. There's such things as blackout curtains for those that feel it's intrusive. Some regulation is needed for patios, their fencing, if they corral it and to prevent eyesores and hours. Well, I think nobody should be out on their patios in the central Deep Cove core, at least because of the residents. Then they shouldn't have their patios filled, I don't think, after about nine o'clock at night. And they need to keep it clean. I can see horrible green stuff all over a lot of them already. And particularly no feeding of the birds, please, particularly the crows. Color fun, maybe a totem pole at the end of the turnaround supplied by the sorata. That would be a photo op with Indian Arm. The film industry did it once. It was magnificent. Creative thinking, please, for these things, but let's have some. Creative thinking, please, for these things. But let's have some permanent district supplied seating for everybody to use. Get patios right by the frontage.
Very much your comments, Anthea Yo. Next, I have John Pratt, followed by Andrew Sostad. John Pratt is joining us here in person. Welcome. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
Good evening, everybody. My name is John Pratt. I live behind Raven at 1031 Caledonia. We've had an ongoing problem for the 32 years that I've lived on Caledonia Avenue with the Raven Pub generating a lot of noise and keeping us up at night. This has gone before council before. In the past, we went to a court case through the District of North Vancouver against the Raven. The typical thing that happens is people get into the parking lot behind the Raven. They're, they've had some drinks. They've had a couple toques, whatever. They start partying and or arguing or fighting in the parking lot. This has happened multiple times over the years. The next big problem with the Raven Pub is it has a stucco wall for the bottom, two thirds of the building. It's a very reflective surface. Also, the buildings, the Raven and all the adjacent commercial spaces form an L shape where the sound just can't really escape. It just comes right down and washes into our bedrooms and stuff like that. Most of our homes have our bedrooms in the back of our house. It's just the way the layout was done of the building itself. The worst thing is, like in my wife's case, she gets up at five o'clock in the morning to drive to Anisus Island. And we can't get to sleep at night, you know, earplugs are effective to a certain level. If the doors are open at the pub as it sits right now, or the windows get opened up, any band playing, the music just emanates, just comes right through our houses, right into our house. I'm curious to know, one of the bylaws suggestions or changes was that there must be a building separating residential areas from from the noise of the patio itself. In this case, that's not going to be the situation. There is no building separating six or seven of the houses on Caledonia Avenue from the Raven and where they want to put their patio. See, the hours suggested in the documents were an 11:00 P. M. Close. Again, for as a group of neighbors, that's a really difficult thing to accept because the thing closes at 11:00, is that last call is like, how much longer does the noise carry on? It always seems to go on for at least an hour after the pub closes for normal activities. So I can't see it being a lot different for the patio. The survey, I was, I was unaware of the survey until I started, until I saw the sign up on the corner across from the old gas station, which is being converted to something else right now. That was my first inkling this was even coming up. I'm not a social media person. I do read news and stuff on the computer, but it just wasn't, didn't seem to be targeted enough. I spoke or canvassed several neighbors and we just didn't get the information. So we're all kind of reacting now at the last second to this whole situation. And I also wonder, in the survey, how many, how many of the people directly affected by these patios have actually been, you know, had been emailed or in some way contacted so they knew this was an issue coming up so we could all sort of, you know, say our little, you know, a little bit about the whole thing or make our comments. So ultimately, I'm not against an outdoor patio for businesses that need, need the money. But in this application at the Raven Pub where we all live, it's really tough. We're not in favor of this at all. That's all I got to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Andrew Sostad, followed by Alistair Knox.
Good evening. I'm Andrew Sostad. I'm John's neighbor. I live right behind the pub at 1043 Caledonia Avenue. Like him, I'm not against all outdoor patios, but they must be looked at on an individual and case-by-case basis. There cannot be a blanket approval of all outdoor patios and specific to the Raven. I believe that they just cannot be allowed to operate a patio in their back area for the reasons that I wished outline and what pretty much you just heard John say as well. So I might be repeating a lot of this. But first, I jot it down some things when we have the presentation from these people. And as John said, they said they can't, they consulted the public about outdoor patios and the neighbors in the area. Nobody knocked on my door. Nobody put a flyer on my thing. Nobody, nobody talked to me about this. Like who, who did they consult? Who did they talk to? I'm dumbfounded that you would even say you consulted neighbors because you didn't. I've lived in and around the Deep Cove area for 50 years. As I say, I currently reside behind the Raven. I've been there for 13 years. My mother had been in this house prior to that since the 90s. So I have a lot of knowledge about the history and of noise complaints towards and about the Raven. It was built back in 79. It was a quiet, dark, little dimly lit tavern. It was just a nice little place to go with sturdy walls and sturdy exterior. And over the years, it's been gaining popularity and changed hands numerous times and been renovated numerous times. The exterior wall facing the rear parking lot in the residence is where we all live now consists of very large windows with very little soundproofing. And it sort of transitioned from being that quiet pub to, as John was saying, it started off with, you know, the odd live mic night and acoustic guitar, which was gentle enough to live bands to DJ electronic music with the thumping bass. It just comes right through our houses. You can't, you can't sleep. The whole rooms are vibrating. And then along with that, there's no real fence separating. And there's a plank board fence with half the boards missing because their customers kick the fence out when they're drunk and stuff. And I don't know, you got cars blaring music, you got people screaming at each other, Harley's revving their engines. It's a madhouse. And as John said, you know, some of my neighbors have had to move their bedrooms from the back where they typically are set up in these houses down to the front basement, just because the noise is too extreme coming from this property. All of this noise was compounded during COVID with the temporary patio that was set up a little less than 10 meters from my property. I immediately lost my right to enjoy my property during the day and night. I could no longer sit and read a book, garden, entertain, or have a barbecue because I now had upwards of 40 people mere meters away from me around, from around Newnish till somewhere late at night when the patio cleared. I lost the valuable living space that my family relies upon, and that space was a part of my home. I'd like you all to imagine your neighbors having 40 or 50 loud people over for 12 hours a day, seven days a week. You know, how would you feel about that every single day? Myself and neighbors put up with it through COVID because it was an extraordinary situation, and we understood that. But there's no way any of us would accept a permanent patio back there. Without a patio, it's already about enough and a hardship to myself and my family. Open windows at the pub, allowing noise out, people and vehicles coming and going and slamming doors, blaring radios, motorbikes revving their engines. And as I said, there's no barrier really between us, no noise barrier at all. An outdoor patio at a pub is a social place filled with groups of people. When people are in groups, they talk louder. When they drink, they talk louder. When the patrons or servers are going in and out from the patio to the pub and back again, they're constantly opening the door and allowing even more pub noise out, which is extremely disturbing to us all. I'm, again, I'm open to the patios, but with regards to the Raven, there's no way it should be allowed. All I see coming from having a patio back there is to make a businessman or woman wealthier while taking the wealth away from, from us residents and neighbors by decreasing our property values. And that's about all I have to say.
Very much. Next speaker I have is Alistair Knox, and I don't see Alistair in the room, so is they're in a virtual attendee in Green Past Afficio. If we can move that name over to the panel. And then I see another virtual hand from Patrick from the chamber. May as well move Patrick over right away as well. Alistair Knox, can you hear me? You are muted. Oh, there you go.
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yes, I can. Welcome. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for, for letting us speak on this opportunity tonight. I wanted to applaud staff for the informative review and the streamlining of this process. I think they've done an excellent job, and I know there are some residents that have felt that they weren't incorporated into the hearings and whatnot, but I can see that everybody's done their best at presenting this and, and bringing it to everyone's attention. We've, you know, as the owner of Arms Reach Bistro in Deep Cove, we've had an interesting cross section of patios relevant to everybody else in the district. Patios ranging from ours, which is what I would call an integrated patio, the extended temporary patio is attached to our existing patio to Honey's, which has got more of a segregated patio. They've got a, an extended patio that is about eight feet removed from their existing patio. Another patio such as Dipco, which is a bit of a hybridized or joint patio system in which they have some of their own tables just out front on a, on a small patio area and then a non-paid-for district-provided park benches out front of them. And then we've got Deep Cove Pizza across from us as well, which didn't participate in it and does allow their customers to move freely wherever they may want to sit up and down the street. From what we have seen and what we've experienced and what we've heard from residents and other businesses alike in Deep Cove, I like to think that we've tried to filter out the good and the bad and come to some sort of opinion and in way we can all proceed with what you've deemed as a recovery process. I don't see it as a recovery. I see this as more of the future. I think this is something that has occurred in Europe for years. We see these patios, and I think it's something that's just starting to, to grab hold in North America. I think we're seeing more and more of these patio situations cropping up, and we're indeed seeing it from all ranges of customers that walk into the bistro that want to be outside or prefer to be al fresco dining, whether there's a pandemic or not. With those four different styles of patios, the issues that I've heard from residents and businesses alike is noise. And we're hearing that tonight from other speakers and cleanliness. Safety has not come up. There's been a consideration from, from those, but we're all present to that. With the issue of noise, I think it's important that, you know, businesses police their own patio spaces and therefore an integrated patio style, such as what we had at Arms Reach Bistro, or fortunate enough to have at Arms Reach Bistro, is important. We closed our patio off. We didn't have people sitting there after hours. It's done at 10 o'clock at night, 11 o'clock by the time patrons would leave. And then there aren't the riffraff walking down the street after that, sitting at the tables and chairs. It is something that we had to police. The other tables and chairs were getting set up at 6:00, 7:00 in the morning at other businesses and creating noise as well. So I think it's important to have a space that each business can, you know, have the onus placed on them to self-police, self-regulate and adhere to the the policies and guidelines and bylaws that have already been implemented and can easily be applied to this situation. So I think noise can be addressed, safety can be addressed, and cleanliness can be addressed if those patios are integrated into the business. And I think it's a big part about making the patio system look cohesive by being uncohesive, if that makes any sense. So that when you look at the street right now, you've got a mixed match of patios in front of different businesses, and they don't look like they, they belong to each business. And it creates sort of a jumbled view of what we're seeing in Deep Cove, whereas if those businesses were allowed to integrate their patios and build them in, they could then build the planters around it, build their theme, build their motif, bring in their color schemes, bring in their food and their menus and, and have it all assimilate into their businesses and, and be looked after in that sort of manner. So I think the visual component here is very important. I think the, the onus on the businesses to look after the patios and, and the protected spaces is very important as well. And I think that we've also got to keep in mind that there are village centers and, and community centers and, and areas where we should be addressing this, such as Deep Cove and Lynn Valley and other areas are going to be more challenged for it as they're, as they're assimilated or as they're in their own little neighborhoods. So concentrating on the village centers is important.
Thank you very much for your comments. Okay, so that completes the first pass of the first list. Now, we do have Patrick, I'm assuming Patrick Stafford Smith from the Chamber of Commerce has put up a virtual hand. I also see Catherine as a virtual hand. Our other members, the public wanting speaker, Robin as well. And yes, so that'll be the next four speakers. So at this point, I'm going to call on Patrick Stafford Smith, joining us virtually. Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Welcome. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
Great. Thank you very much. I'm sorry I couldn't be there in person, but I'm glad I can call in this way. Your mayor or Mayor and Council, I couldn't have said it better myself, the speaker before me. I'd like to speak in support of what's being put in front of us here. Both the intent. So first of all, I think the business support post-COVID is a critical part of this, but it's also something that I feel is supportive of the business community and is supportive of the kind of public opinion I've heard generally from the business community and others in my last couple of years, albeit the concerns about noise and so on, which the previous speaker mentioned. I do feel that those could be managed on, on the basis of the way he discussed it, but also much like any other concerns related to noise in any other application. So I support the intent in that it's going to support the business community and the community itself. I'd like to say I support the process. I was at all of the business, at least the process as it relates to the business community. I attended all of the outreach sessions, and I think there was really good discussion and some really good points that were brought up, and those are reflected in, in the document. And so I certainly think that it's been thoughtful and nuanced in the way that it's been put forward, and it's pretty comprehensive. And I'd also like to say I support the recommendations put forward. I think on a broad basis, having patios in the community, it's something that I think I'd heard a lot of comments about this even pre-pandemic, and it just was, the pandemic was a catalyst for it. And if we're able to keep that, I think it's a community building effort. It really supports the viability of many businesses, but it also supports the experience of those that want to be inside and outside. So, so overall, I, I'm very supportive of this. We are as the chamber, and thank you very much for giving me the time to speak.
Thank you for your comments, Patrick Stafford Smith. The next speaker I have joining us virtually is Catherine. Is that Catherine Fagerland?
It is. Hello.
Hello, welcome. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
Yes, hi, Mayor and Council. Thank you very much. I hadn't sent anything in. I was, I was fully intending to just listen today, but I, there was a couple of issues raised that I'd just like to support or reinforce. One thing was about the survey. I know, I know we've talked many, many times about how, how to do outreach, how to reach people. We all assume with all of the social media that people are all reached. But obviously, they're not because there's quite a few people next to the Raven that didn't even know that there was outreach or there was a survey. Something similar happened with the Notton Avenue detour. I talked to people who hadn't heard anything about it. So at least when there is, I wonder if council, if, if, or if the district would consider this whole, when there's an issue like the Notton Avenue detour, there was letters sent to, to a range of, or to an area. Sometimes that area is a little bit too small, but to support the idea or to support participation for those that are definitely affected, could we in the future, please, do mailouts as well as, as media outreach? Especially now that the North Shore News is going online, it's a little bit more, everybody used to get, or most people used to get North Shore News to their door, and they could at least leave, leave through there and look at, look for, for events. Now it's all online, and that doesn't make it particularly easy. I mean, yes, it might be on the website, but how do you know to look on the website? If, and if you're not on Facebook and there's lots of people that are not on Facebook, then how do you find out? So I would encourage you to start to use the old mail drop. Mail drop um method of letting people know that there's something going on that might affect them. Um on the issue of shared use, and I'm think, I mean, I'm more obviously most familiar with the Deep Cove area. Um on the on Gallant, when Ms. Yo was was speaking, I I walk up and down Gallant all the time. And I would agree with her that I think I my personal preference would be to see. The patios that are directly in front of the business. Those are theirs for sure, no problem. But the ones that are then where there's a sidewalk in between them and and a seating area. Um we have lots of visitors to the Cove. It I don't think that those should be. Um those should be parti- partitioned off specifically to businesses. I recognize that there's some advantage in that. Because then the business is responsible for maintenance, et cetera, et cetera. But I I um as one as one speaker said. People go to different places along the Gallant Strip to get different kinds of food. They should be able to sit. Anywhere in i- in that public sphere. Um and and I don't know how you square the circle in terms of maintenance, but I think I think. That should be group use. And somebody else brought up the idea of a village center. That is kind of like a village center. So everything that's in the public space there should be open to anybody who wants to sit down, even if you want to bring a sandwich and sit down there. I that should that should be allowed um in my opinion. Um in terms of the hours, we were taught, you were you were talking about places with with um with alcohol and without alcohol. And um several people have spoken about this business of after-hours, the last call. People saying goodbye, you know, all the congregating that goes on afterwards. So the the clo- the the cutoff time. Um should consider a buffer. So s- s- say you stop serving alcohol at eleven o'clock. Um it's there should be the the you should be able, there should be, I I think it'd be better if if um if. Anybody who's serving to a patio shut down the service at ten. That gives people an hour to kind of. Wind down. And if they really want to ke- hang hang around and keep um socializing, then they should move inside the business and and save neighbors from. From unnecessary or from from being disturbed by the noise that goes on, especially at the very end of an evening. Um so that, yeah, and yeah, and then just. All in in something like this, there's always going to be one-offs and I hope that council and hangs on to a little bit of the ability to to actually. Um vet things, especially where there's alcohol going to be served and where things like the Raven, where where there where there is a border right onto residential property. For that matter, on Gallant, there's a border right onto residential property. There's residential um. There there's residential suites on either side of Gallant Avenue that would be affected by excess noise. So that's all I've got to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your comments, Catherine Fagerland. Uh the next speaker I have, speaker I have is Robin, row three on the right here and followed by gentleman row three on the left. Uh we have a person who joined the meeting virtually who uh has raised and withdrawn their hand a couple of times. Uh your username is just coming up as. Uh our webinar ID number. Uh I don't know if you can change your name and and put your hand back up if you want to join. Uh the panel and um and make your comments. Uh but the next speaker I have, again, here in person, uh Robin, welcome. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for this opportunity. My name is Robin Delaney and I'm here representing Delaney's Coffee. I'm not here representing the Edgemont Village Business Association, although I have uh discussed this issue extensively with them and they. Virtually largely or extensive or exclusively agree with me. So I just want to say that. Thanks for reacting so quickly uh in the past years uh for the extension of patios on private property. I highlight the issue of private property as I believe any changes to patios must be on private property exclusively. It should not include. Any erosion of existing parking spaces, even a single one. Uh in the past twenty-nine years since. Our family has had Delaney's Coffee, uh the parking is at an all-time challenge. Uh there's a whole bunch of reasons for that. We don't need to go into that tonight. I think we're talking a completely di- different issue. But I do want to highlight that that the any changes to the status quo should not be on private property. Uh must pardon me, must be on private property. It can't be on public property at the cost of any parking. That's all I want to share. And I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you very much. Uh next speaker I have is uh third row left here. Welcome. And uh.
Thanks, I'm Mayor and Council. Uh my name's Darwin Green. I'm uh a resident of Deep Cove on Lower Glunt, four-three-nine-zero Glunt. I'm um I just got a neighbor here, I guess. I I on the Strata Council and they've given me latitude to speak on behalf of the Straddle, Strata. It's a twenty-one unit building. With seventeen or eighteen residential uh units and it three commercial units. Um you know, one of the things, uh there's been a fairly common theme here on on engagement. I did notice that there was a targeted effort to meet with the businesses. And there certainly was, you know, we participated in in the online uh open survey, but it. It struck me as odd that there wasn't a targeted effort to the residences that are directly impacted. And it wouldn't be hard to do. Cause you know where your, excuse me, existing um licenses are. And so so. You know, that's the piece that I think was missing, because I I think when you look at a broad survey and people that live ten blocks away, they're gonna have an entirely different outlook. Versus the people that actually face and and overlook these um these patios. And you know, my comments are really directed to the use of public property. Using public property for a private industry benefit. Um it's it's critical that you have that input of the residences that are impacted because it is public property and has a direct impact on the public. You know, I think the residences of uh of Glunt were very accommodating through COVID. It's a theme you've been hearing here. We all. We all really wanted to support and look after our local businesses, but. You know, there came a point when enough was enough, because it actually has a huge impact to our quality of life and. The surveys that go around, they constantly talk about livability and and livability is, you know, it's a very real thing. It it directly impacts residents' quality of life. And and so. Yeah, I mean, I guess my my main point here, objective is is to is to really, I guess, impress upon the council. And the district in general uh to think hard about the impacts to residents. Uh you know, we have some good examples today here and. For us, uh we don't think it makes sense for public space to be used for private gain. If I'm a private business operator. I love it. I mean, why wouldn't you? You're able to increase your seating area by fifty percent, a small licensing fee. I mean, what business wouldn't like that? What uh the owner of those those actual buildings, which one wouldn't like that? It makes their their rents go up. It's fantastic. It but it actually reduces my property value and um. You know, the chairs come out between five and six in the morning. Honey's chairs come out, get dragged out. I've talked to the guys multiple times. They say, look, come out later, but they don't. And then there's people leaving the Arms Reach Patio at ten at night, talking eleven at night below us. It's it's from five in the morning until ten at night. And it's loud in the summer, like really loud. And you know. Now that the trees have all been cut down, it's really hot in condos. I'm gonna open the frickin' windows, doors too, so there's. There there's no rest to it, right? Um so I guess my my real takeaway here, what I want to leave you guys with is is we. There needs to be an integration in any approval process. Um of residents' interest in a real meaningful way, uh in in my view. Um and self-policing doesn't work. I've seen it time and time again. You know, the district doesn't have enough enforcement. You know, we as a strata wanted a tent to come down over a business that was part of our strata that was at a patio. Six months of letters, cause it just walk and, you know, condo residences view. And and had much bigger population base or much bigger um clientele base. They're creating more noise and it didn't come down until the construction came up, right? Um didn't matter fines were coming from the strata. They didn't care. So I I don't buy the self-policing uh perspective. And I I think. Yeah, you just need to think long and hard um before approving any kind of the patio seating for private benefit. And and in my view, even even for for the public there, like. It's noisy. It really is. Like all these points, the more people that are there, the louder it gets. People tie up their dogs. They spend five minutes going in to bite, going at the dogs, barking outside. The kids are screaming. Nobody looks up. Nobody thinks. There's places where businesses should be, uh where they're, you know, in a parking lot. The Lynn Valley Mall, you know, you go to the the pub there, it's in a parking lot. There's nobody right there. We have, there's fifty different units overlooking that one lowered block. It shouldn't be viewed as open public space for everybody. It's uh that's that's pretty much all I got to say. Thank you.
Very much for your comments. Uh just checking in with the virtual attendee with the uh numbered username. Your hand is back down, so I'm assuming you don't have comments to contribute. I see virtual attendee Corey Cost. Uh can we move Corey Cost over as a panelist? Uh Corey Cost, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. I I was just in transition. Good evening, your worship members of the council. Um I have a few comments. It it's, you know, I'm not really familiar what the. Uh extent was for the businesses' support by the province or the feds during COVID. I'm somewhat familiar uh what took place for the average person. But I I was fairly sure that businesses were um granted some support. And so. Um and that's good. I think we're all willing to uh help from public funds. Um our business communities. I'm for a uh a very sustainable uh business throughout our community, no matter what. Products or ki- kind of business there is. For a proper overview, I think um with the passage of these two bylaws. There seems to be some confusion on on whether uh there would be any further involvement. By the public with the with staff. Um or a- any specific proposal that comes forth. I think council should clear clarify to the public. Uh the process uh that would tend normally take place should these bylaws be approved. Now, um I also noticed that the sound level. Um continues to be uh considerably lower than normal. So you really have to turn up the volume quite high in order to hear. The council and members of the public uh speak. My expressions, I submitted a fairly large number of concerns and queries, but that does not mean or imply that. Uh either I'm for or against these bylaws. I just need to bring out issues for discussion. Um so that they can be. Used by council to make their decisions. I thank Kevin Zhang for sending me his responses at four o'clock this afternoon. I really would have appreciated them a few hours earlier than that, because it just squeezed my time clock quite a bit. So I wish to comment on the comments. Um to that, so um I'm not sure if I want to read out everything, but a comparison. Was requested between patio regulations before, during and after Toba. And um. It says he does not unfortunately address what the situation was before Toba. I wish that still had taken place, plain and simple. An answer for that part of the. Input I sent some week before, almost a full week before to Mayor and Council. To have the interior floor space have somewhat different definition than the total gross floor area. This is a pretty technical thing. Uh it's been rationalized to now use the term gross floor area, but still didn't answer the question. Is there a difference between that to measure the floor area than uh than is taking place now? There is also the question of um. Of why we should not extend support to all businesses. Why choose food or liquor establishments? Surely, all businesses are in a similar uh position than before. You couldn't occupy them. They couldn't go and visit them except a couple of people at a time. They had just as severe restrictions. About the cap- capacity um of an establishment now, uh that reply was quite clear. To question four. I assume council got the same set of questions from staff that I did in their replies. Unfortunately, there's still some confusion about the use of public lands for patios. And I could see that because the word public was mentioned a hundred and thirty-one times in one of the references. And um. I really would like council to make a blanket statement that this is bylaws are only going to apply to private lands, that there is no intent. To to put back into the public space what was seen uh in Deep Cove.
We're over time, Dr. Cost.
I will come back.
Like to come back a second time. You're absolutely welcome.
Yes, uh you should also, your worship, clarify when you say we'll have an additional five-minute input. And additional five. Input, is that the discretion of chair? Is that the same or a different additional?
That would be for a third, a d- a third speaking opportunity would be at the discretion of the chair.
Thanks for clarification. I'll come back and try to be a little more quickly uh the next time. Thank you.
Uh thank you very much, uh Dr. Cost, for your comments. Okay, um so uh what we, yes. Uh although I'll come back for second-time speakers in just a minute. So the the process is, we're gonna go through and just exhaust first-time speakers and then. Uh once we've done that, then we're gonna take a little bit of a standing break. We'll let the staff uh. Uh council's been asking clarifying questions uh throughout the evening back to staff. And I think it's up over a dozen questions at this point. And so then we'll have a an opportunity for the. Um staff to respond to those. And then we're gonna come back to the public again. And again, first, second and third time speakers in in that scenario after that point. So. Would anybody else like to address the council for a first time before I go to uh the council's uh questions? Okay, I don't see any virtual attendees or participants in person here expressing interest for a first time. So at this point, I'm gonna go. To staff and say, why don't we have a a three or four-minute uh standing break and then we'll come back to uh the staff for responses to the council questions? I think that's fair. Okay, so we're going to recess the meeting for about three or four minutes while we give staff a chance to uh prepare some responses. Okay, well, we can get, we can get clarification on that, I think. So at this point, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to resume the public hearing. We do have members of the staff, Dan Milburn, Yan Zhang, Kevin Zhang and Holly Adams here present in person to be able to respond to questions. There are a fair number of questions that have come in from members of council, and they may have some rather extensive answers in some cases. And so you want to sit in the back or would you like to sit up in the center here or you're comfortable, you're good. We'll make sure that Mehdi can capture you back at those seats comfortably. Okay. So go ahead. What we'd like to hear is the question followed by your response, please.
Thank you, worship. So I'll go through the list one at a time and some questions will be handled by some other members of staff. So the first question is, is the bylaw only pertaining to restaurants and pubs versus retail stores or units comprising of workshop spaces or events? So as for the definition of outdoor customer service area in the proposed bylaw, the applicable uses will be restaurant, retail food service, neighborhood public house or licensed lounge. Second question is, please provide a geographical breakdown of the 27 temporary outdoor business area permits issued. And Holly will provide the answer here.
In terms of approved temporary outdoor business areas, Edmond has three businesses participating, so restaurants and a cafe. Marine Drive area has six, and that's a mix of restaurants and retail food services. Maplewood has one brewery. Lynn Valley has two, both pubs. Lynn Creek has four, so one cafe and three distilleries or breweries. Lions Gate has one patio, so retail food service. And Deep Cove has seven, and there's, there's a mix of restaurants, cafes, retail food service, and the Raven adds one pub.
So just to clarify, we don't, do we have a slide that covers all of the addresses of the current October? Do we current, do we have that at the ready tonight or?
We could show a map if council would like. Definitely, yes.
Uh, thank you. So the, the follow up to question to that was, and if possible, breakdown between bars, restaurants, coffees, cafes and, sorry, and cafe shops. So I think we'll provide that through email as previously discussed. Next question is
Can I just add to that, though? I want to be very clear. This regulation will be generally applicable throughout the district of North Vancouver. And so 27 only represents the ones that pursued it during the, the temporary period. There may be other businesses that come forward, and that goes to some of the notice questions. So a number of people have asked questions about why notice wasn't specifically mailed to a whole bunch of households. Generally, when we're talking about a generally applicable bylaw, so this is not a rezoning of a single property. The district employs general promotion of surveys. We use our websites. We put signs up in strategic areas that are affected by it. But the mail out is generally used when it is a specific property that's being considered for a rezoning bylaw. And so I know there's been a number of questions about why that wasn't specifically employed in this case. It's because not only are there 27 properties throughout the district, so you'd have to mail to an area around all of those 27. You also could have this show up in any other commercial space pretty much within the district with these types of businesses. And so it is a generally applicable bylaw. So we generally tend to use signs in the neighborhoods that are possibly affected by it. So in the case of the Raven, which was asked about, there was a sign put up across the street on the corner, four by eight tall with all of the details on it there. And in each of the commercial centers where there was a possibility of these licenses going out, we had signs in those neighborhoods as well. But it's just when you have so many properties that it would, you would have to advertise around plus it's generally applicable to a great number of additional properties. It's hard to use targeted mailing rather than more general community notification. Sorry, Mr. Zhang.
Very thank you worship for that clarification. So the next question is, the extension date of September 30th is in the high season of outdoor patios. To assume that these businesses will be ready to accommodate the work needed to comply with the new regulations is challenging. Can we extend to the end of the year? So the answer to that is yes, council can provide staff with a direction to extend our temporary patio programs to the end of the year. Or any day. However, the province has not indicated that they will be extending their temporary extended service area program past March 31st.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, the next question is, in terms of accessibility, is there currently a requirement for accessible tables for indoor dining areas? And I'll refer to Mr. Milburn for that.
Thank you, worship. Just to note, the, the B C building code establishes a standard for accessibility within places of public assembly, public areas, including residential scenarios. So the district essentially enforces the B C building code standards, which typically rate to access to space, but don't have a minimum standards for numbers of tables. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Milburn. So the next question is explain addressing public and neighborhood impacts. What does the addressing mean? So the main item, I think, to addressing impacts would be the requirement for separation in relation to single family properties. So as it is currently in the zoning bylaw, in essence, there, the main premise, the restaurant or the pub has to be in between the patio and the single family, uh, single family property. So just by example, the Raven, I a outdoor patio would not be permitted on the back of the Raven because the in essence, there wouldn't be a building separating the single family from the patio. And there are a few other provisions in the guide that address impacts. So one is all temporary structures, other than fencing, railings, stairs, paths must have transparent walls, and that's to reduce the visual kind of clutter that may arise from other patios. Proposals also have to be reviewed in accordance with environmental and hazard DPA. So again, this will be a environmental impact consideration. Patio furniture enclosures, railings, walls, barriers should not block pedestrian or vehicle sightlines or visibility of street signage and traffic signals. So this is a primary safety concern. And planters and plants also should not obstruct sightlines or create hazards for vehicle operators or pedestrians.
That was helpful, but I, I think we're specifically, the question is looking for what ultimately is the hammer that municipality has to correct problems? And so I think the answer is the business license can be reviewed by the district if there are negative impacts in surrounding areas. Is that fair, Mr. Milburn?
Thank you, worship. There are three typical approaches that council has in terms of enforcing its rules. One is if there is a ticketable offense, a ticket can be issued as an M T I or bylaw notice. The other is through a long form information or civil injunction. And the other that you mentioned is a direct enforcement tool that council has that involves things such as remedial action orders for hazardous situations. Or in the case of businesses, which is most applicable to the circumstances being discussed tonight, council has the authority to suspend or cancel a business license if they're not, you know, if they fail to operate in a peaceful, law-abiding manner. So that can occur for, under reasonable grounds. That's the test in the act. Additionally, the license officer who issues the business license can establish terms and conditions for receiving, renewing, or continuing to hold that license. And those conditions are specified in the, in the bylaw. And they can be added to the license in response to a nuisance or complaint issue where staff feel it is justified. In all those cases, of course, there is an appeal mechanism to go to council should the licensing officer's decision be not accepted by the, by the business holder. So there is a series of mechanisms in place to allow the district to enforce and also for appeals to council. Thank you.
That actually, I think that was what you were looking for in the question, counselor. Is that adequately addressed?
Well, I, I think that in the issue of noise, Mr. Cost brought it up with decibel readings. We've had that issue before in the past, and we didn't get close to the decibel reading. And yet the noise was still very impactful, you know, as the residents on Caledonia pointed out, and the residents on Gallant, you know, just people talking. You know, and we're putting a, a time of 11:00 PM in this bylaw for patios, you know, I think there's a big, there's going to be a big issue there.
And I think what Mr. Milburn's response was, both at the outset and in an ongoing fashion, we have the ability to go back and say, your new closing time is 10 o'clock. Or if, if there's a non-compliance issue, then we have the ability to withdraw their business license. And so ultimately, the hammer rests with municipality still to allow that going forward in a reasonable fashion. Obviously, we wouldn't want somebody investing tens of thousands of dollars in upgrades to a patio space just to simply have the district arbitrarily close it. It, it would be done in a good faith manner, but, but ultimately, the district does retain the ability to withdraw the business license under a great number of conditions.
Yeah, I just, I'm not sure if that is going to give any comfort to those that are most impacted by. Could I just ask one question in something that Mr. Zhang said, that the walls of the enclosure have to be transparent? What did you?
That's right. So the idea is that we will allow, it is proposed to allow patios to have some sort of enclosure like yeah, tents, plastic sheet to provide their patrons with weather protection when it is colder or raining outside, but they cannot put up walls and in essence, turn it into an enclosed building addition. That's right.
Just the word transparent.
Thank you. Back to you.
Thank you, worship. So the next question, actually, the next two questions are sort of similar. Is with six month transition period, what happens to existing extended patios between March 31st to September? Which is currently the busiest time for outdoor seating. There was talk of extending the current expiry. Please confirm. So as long as an application is received by the district, the businesses do not have to complete their upgrades or changes to their patio by March 31st. The extension of the current expiry of the, I think you're referring to the provincial program. That's up to the province, and we haven't had an indication from them whether they will be extending that or not.
But when do they have to have everything complete? If they submitted a proposal, say, April 1st, right? When does that patio have to be complete? Is there a time limit?
If, if, if there's a lack of continuity, I think what you're saying is that the existing ones have until March to If, if, if there's a lack of continuity, I think what you're saying is that the existing ones have until March to, to, to file their intent. And, and then there will be no break in the continuity of their service. But if there are new applicants or applicants that go into abeyance of some kind, they're not, they're not acted on, then they would have to come in under a new response from staff. Is that fair?
Yeah, I, I, your worship, yeah, I just want to clarify, that is the case. So for most of the Toba holders, they probably wouldn't have any problem and issues with the timeline. And we did put out the six months grace period to allow those Toba holders who may have issues with permits, who require some time to think through their plans. So as long as we do receive, we have an in-stream application from them with the intent that they do want it to convert to a permanent patio. We're not going to enforce on that, we would try to keep work with them for compliance.
Your worship, just a slight clarification, the liquor control and cannabis branch has their own separate regulations to do with licensed establishments, so that's a different situation. And we're, we're have sought direction from the provinces to whether or not they'd be extending those allowances on a temporary basis, but have not heard back yet.
Okay. It's Council Ma's question, I don't know.
Well, I think we both asked the same question.
What's the clarification? Yeah, Council Muri, sir, you had a clarification?
Well, um, like, there are going to be costs to these permanent patios in regards to some level of construction or permanency. And from March onward, that's when the weather starts to change and people are actually filling those existing patios. So to require that these businesses somehow are going to be redoing their patios to be able to comply with this deadline is challenging for some of them because they're still trying to recover.
So the response I heard from Yan Zhang was that if they file their intent by March 31st, then we will temporarily just extend what they currently have until we can bring them into compliance. Is that fair?
But that's, that's impacting them through a very busy.
Well, it may mean that they don't have to do the construction until the fall.
Okay, well, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
I think, yes. So I think probably what answer that question is, if somebody files their intent, how much time do they have to get into full compliance? Then we've said that we'll temporarily not police it, but the intent is that by the end of the calendar year, they will have had to come into compliance, what would be, what would it be?
Well, I, I think it's a little bit hard to say because it would be not dissimilar to a work without permit kind of situation we currently have. We would try to work with them and then I think there's a lot of hardship. I would say there might be one or two. We don't expect the majority of the Toba holder would have this issue, but we would really try to work with them and, you know, try to enforce. And, you know, we don't have a firm deadline for work without permit situation, so.
Mr. Milburn, and then I've got Nianella Lloba on the line as well.
Thank you worship, just to note, the recommendation of a six month grace period is a recommendation of staff. And that's not a bylaw condition, it's just a recommendation of staff. And so at second integrating it as this item returns to council, council could provide a specific direction on what council felt was the appropriate period of time.
In consultation with the groups. Nianella Lloba, you have additional comments?
Yes, thank you worship, thank you worship. Very quickly, we anticipate, we anticipate that most businesses will maintain their Toba applications. There is going to be very few, their Toba setup, I should say. Businesses would not be going out and making extraordinary investments to change things. So really, the six month period is designed for those stickier ones that will require a little bit more work. So, but for the majority of what we've seen out in the community, it is likely not a whole lot of changes will come forward as part of these proposals.
Thank you very much. I really want to progress to the questions to see if your answers aren't picked up. Is it something specific to this issue, Council Ma? Okay.
When you come back with the data, can you also clarify how many of?
Oh, perfect. We, we need you to be picked up by a microphone for the record. So you're, you can move over to Council Forbes' seat, I would really appreciate that. We'll get that worked on after the meeting.
Can you clarify up to 27, how many are, involve private land and public?
That's it? No. Your worship will provide that information as part of the public hearing record. Just as we indicated, we provide the specific locations as part of the public hearing record. Thank you.
But it's approximately half. I think the number I had heard was 13 on public and is, that would, I guess, assume 14 on private? Is that?
Your worship, I'll just confirm with my records before I provide a response to council.
I don't understand why they don't have that information tonight before we close this hearing.
Worship, I can quickly answer this, there's nine on public road allowance and a remainder on private land.
Thank you very much.
I guess the point though is, is can I see where those are? Do we have that list? Thank you.
Okay, next question, please.
Thank you worship. So the next question is, are these patios allowed next to residential neighborhoods? And the answer to that is yes, so outdoor patios would be allowed in any zone that permits outdoor customer service areas as a permitted use. So yes, they would in fact sometimes be adjacent to single family residential, multifamily residential, mixed-use family residential.
Thank you.
The next question is, why are we applying one size fits all hours? All patios have different geography and impact to local neighborhoods. Can this be addressed on a case-by-case basis? Raven versus neighbors, deep coves, having chairs and tables out all night. So to clarify, staff are now proposing one set of operating hours for all patios. Each business license will have individual hours tailored to the business and will depend on the experience with temporary patios and can be amended by, it can be amended by the district as necessary. Next question is, what can be done to mitigate the noise problems at the Raven? Why didn't the residents on Caledonia receive a survey? So the answer to that is, as proposed, the bylaw, as proposed, the, patios would not be permitted on the back of the Raven. Any changes to Raven's liquor license will require council endorsement. And we, in regards to kind of current complaints with the Raven, that will be addressed by some of the methods that Mr. Milburn has mentioned through the enforcement of the noise regulation bylaw. The proposed changes.
Nice and loud, Mr. Zhang, nice and loud, please.
Thanks.
Okay. I need you on your microphone, sorry.
Did you say that the, under the proposal, that the Raven would be allowed to have a patio in the back?
No.
So to clarify, through your worship, patios would not be allowed on the back of the Raven.
Okay, thank you.
Facing the residential properties. And, sorry, and the last part of the question is, why didn't residents on Caledonia receive a survey? I think that was already addressed by the mayor earlier on in this discussion. These are changes that apply generally across the district to numerous properties. So in those cases, the district, we don't typically employ the mailing of mailouts. Now, the next question is, a parking requirement was mentioned. Does this mean a patio requires a relative number of parking spaces? Can we encourage other modes of transport by reducing and limiting the required number of parking spots? Which may also help reduce noise problems at patios such as the Raven? So an outdoor customer service area does not require parking spaces. And that's the existing condition in the zoning bylaw, and we're not proposing to change that. So outdoor customer service will continue to not require parking. And staff will encourage bike parking through the applicant's guide. The next question, 11 P M does not work in every area, given many of these patios exist in residential areas. We will need to again, address certain areas on a case-by-case basis. Please advise on how this could be constructed. So the answer to that is businesses looking to establish a patio will be reviewed on a case-by-cases. And the operating hours will be established in the business license. And if there is liquor service, the service areas will be set by the province. So they will be unique to each outdoor customer service area.
Sorry, say that again, I can't.
The outdoor customer service area, area, applications will be reviewed on a case-by-case basis.
By us? By the province?
By the staff.
By staff, I mean us. I mean.
To be clear, not at the council table, by the, by the district of North Vancouver through staff. Mr. Milburn, you have a response?
Thank you worship, if there is a liquor application that requires a resolution of council, that will be reviewed on a case-by-cases by council through the standard liquor license application process. In other circumstances described in the bylaw, they would be a staff review. Council would be involved if there is an appeal to that decision of the business license, if it was, say, not issued. And the applicant could apply to see councils a reconsideration of that decision. If, if the intent of the question is, could there be a process where council had a specific case-by-case approval of every circumstance? The answer would be not in this bylaw. If council did not support this bylaw, which essentially has some delegated authority through business license issuance, instead, it would be not approving this bylaw and council instead considering every application through either a variance or rezoning, subject to the nature of the application.
The reason I ask that question, Mayor Little, is because we are looking at areas differently than previously. Deep Cove, Gallant Avenue being one. So following a process and not addressing the issues that are going to impact the local neighborhood in Deep Cove, for instance, you know, based on a business license application or the province, I don't think is giving us enough due diligence to address the issues that are going to arise. And I have yet to hear how we're going to deal with the Cove.
Okay, but I think what staff have said is that we have the ability to alter the times at a future time, if we so wish, if you want to have the discussion at a, at a, at a, at a community level, just as we did with the neighborhood, good neighbor policy that we've employed in some other areas in the district. You, you have the ability to impact the business license.
But as we did with the businesses, we went out to them directly and communicated with them. We haven't done that to the residential neighborhoods in who, you know, neighborhoods will be impacted by this. So I think we've missed a step. We've talked to one group that has to benefit, but we have, have not talked to the other group that will have to deal with the impact. And to go back later and say, ah, it's not working out, I don't know if that is the best way to deal with this.
Okay, so I have a response from Nianella Lloba.
Thank you worship, and to, to Councilor Muri, the Deep Cove area, patios are currently down. All the temporary patios that were up, and this is for construction of the livable Deep Cove project that has started as of this month. And we anticipate that, that to take place for the next few months. So that whole area will go, it's de facto separate, separate process because the infrastructure that will be installed in the cove is part of the livable Deep Cove project, the use for that space is still uncertain. And we will be bringing that use back to council and as part of that process to determine how that space will be used and that will incorporate some sort of underground consultation with that area.
Thank you very much. Mr. Milburn, response?
Your worship, we also have a comment from engineering specifically with respect to the, the Deep Cove process. And Mr. Zhang could read that into the record.
Okay, thank you worship. So the, the following has been provided by engineering regarding an update on the Deep Cove, livable Deep Cove construction project. So construction at Lower Glant for the, for the livable Deep Cove project commenced last Monday of February 13th. Our contractor has mobilized onsite to start removing road and sidewalk and installing fencing around their construction zone. The district is on track to hit our expected completion date of July 2023, before the peak summer season for businesses. Feedback so far has been relatively positive, glad to see progress finally happening. They understand why Glant is closed with detours via Norton and are happy with the performance of the contractors. Temporary parking accommodations are being provided as necessary. And staff continue to work closely with the community to minimize their disruptions. We did have some initial challenges with bus routing, but those have been resolved and will continue to improve. Lastly, staff continue to progress in their discussions, including with businesses and residents on how flex zones in the lower Glant will be used and will provide council with an update in due course.
Could you carry on?
Thank you, so back to the original list of questions. Can staff provide a list of all patios who have shown interest in this process? So as promised earlier, we will be providing that list of, okay, perfect, and those are the ones that are interested in this patio process. And the next question is, many patios will not have any impacts to surrounding neighborhoods, but there are those that will have considerable impact. And those will need to be addressed. Given this, can we look at a process which will address those patios adjacent or directly below residences? So I guess the question, the answer to that is yes, applicant, applications will be reviewed on a case-by-cases basis by staff. And when necessary, they may be reviewed by council. So for example, if there is a liquor license endorsements that's required or if there are parking variances that are required, or if, you know, in some cases, other variances are required, or if a rezoning is required.
No public concern, that would be a requirement.
Sorry, what do you mean by that?
Well, Mayor Little, I just keep going back to this point that, again, the businesses have been connected with, but the local neighbors haven't been connected and that's why we've heard from them today. There is, so, so I, I don't understand if, if a business applied for a patio license and it was being dealt with directly through staff and that was issued, but there were concerns in the neighborhood about that patio existing. And there are some patios that are looking at applications that don't have them now. There is one in the Cove. Where is the process for the neighborhood to be a part of that discussion? And this bylaw is void of that piece. And, and my concern is that we're going to be issuing these licenses and then there's going to be an eruption.
So let's get a clarification on what staff intend to do in that case. So let's say you receive a new application, not one that's existing, had an existing Toba, then what consultation and survey would take place with the neighbors before consideration of that new application?
Thank you worship, if there is a liquor license proposal with it, as mentioned, there is a process attached that following the standard council policies that are in place for the review of liquor licenses. If there is a, a no liquor license, it would be reviewed by the license inspector. There isn't a public process attached to the issuance of a business license. I just want to clarify that staff had an extensive consultation program both before and then for notification for this public hearing. And that involved the methods that were described earlier tonight, and I think you summarized quite clearly.
All of the problematic ones that we have had, have, have had a liquor license. And therefore, there is a public process for those most sensitive ones. The other spaces that do not have a liquor license, so you're thinking about a coffee shop or some, something like that, they could apply directly to staff, have an application heard by staff and ruled on by staff without the neighbors being notified. Is that, is that?
That's correct, your worship, under the proposal before council, and if council is. And if council is not interested in that bylaw, the other processes would be, as I mentioned, development variance permit, rezoning, or actually temporary use permit as well. Depending upon the nature of the request being submitted. So there would be a significant process attached to it, and that's not currently what's recommended tonight. But if council doesn't support this bylaw, that would be the alternative.
Or even if they do, they could add a DP in future to cover the whole district under those circumstances.
Your worship, well, let me just clarify, in certain circumstances, of course, the current zoning bylaw already allows certain sized patios. This is essentially a recommendation to change those zoning bylaw standards to capture the extent of the areas anticipated through the Toba process. So it's taking what we've learned through that process, all the public feedback received through that process and applying it to bylaw amendments. Thank you.
There is, there is still, it remains a concern that there's no public process.
Okay. Next question, please.
Thank you, worship. So the next question is, where are the responses to Mr. Cost's questions? So the questions were provided to Mr. Cost via email. And we also CC the response to the municipal clerk. And we can provide them again to mayor and council.
Why didn't we get them?
Are the, you know, for this type of public hearing, is it not normal process that question and answer series between staff on that particular issue would be shared with council?
Thank you, worship. They're provided to the clerks, they could be part of the record, and so council could review those part of the record. We typically don't involve council necessarily in that process, because the focus, the public hearing is for council to hear from the public and hear the responses. And council determines which council questions would be answered at the hearing. We provided the response, the response is part of the public record, council has the ability to review them as part of its consideration tonight.
So if the member of the public sends their question to the council, then council will be included in the response. If the member of the public sends a question directly to staff, then staff will make it part of the formal input into the public process, but does not automatically copy it to the staff. Is that accurate?
That's correct, your worship, or we would be answering, you know, potentially hundreds of questions in front of council during the hearing itself. And instead, we provided a written response that goes into the written records, so council can review that in its time.
Could I just be advised as to where the written record is? Because I usually get those responses and I don't know where to find them. Unless, if Mr. Cost hadn't said, did council get a copy of the answers to my question? I would not have known that they even existed.
Forward slash agenda will have the electronic version of it. We also have a hard copy was on the table, I think, as people came in, if it was printed in time. Mr. Zhang, was it included in the printed record? I understand the responses were at four o'clock today, but did they make it into the printed record?
Your worship, it was provided to the clerk this evening, and so we understand it's going into the written record.
Okay.
That, that's our understanding. He could, he could, the clerk could clarify that.
All right. Next question, please.
Thank you, worship. So the next question is, how will Deep Cove public space differ from all other patio applications? So the use for the public spaces introduced in the live, livable Deep Cove project is currently not finalized. And staff will bring this up as a separate process. And the last question is, the proposed bylaws calls for a building to be separated, a building to separate a patio from residential homes to provide a sound barrier. How does that apply to condos or apartments above a restaurant or patio? So staff are definitely aware of this concern and will work proactively with business owners to address potential nuisance at the business license and patio application stage. Noise customary and incidental to residential uses are located in urban areas will form part of our considerations. Additionally, council can provide input on hours of operation through a liquor license applications. And the district can control hours of operation through the business licensing conditions. And that concludes the questions and answers to staff.
Okay. Councillor Murray, just a clarification?
Yeah, clarification. So Deep Cove is going through a separate process, but there's five applications under the temporary outdoor business area, the Toba, that exist in the Cove. So.
What's the question?
Well, this bylaw would apply to those businesses, but then we're going to go through another process. So that's what the question was, how will the process in the Cove differ from this one? And yet they're still working on that.
It includes streetscape, which would be a little different. Mr. Milburn?
Thank you, worship. So there are no current patios there now, so there is none to extend at the moment. They are all on public lands, and so that gives council specific control despite what zoning standards are created. Those zoning standards control the private space. Okay, the public space is controlled by license to occupy. And what we're indicating tonight is that we understand there is an ongoing process engaging the public, including the concerns we've heard, heard tonight. And that engineering will be coming back with recommendations for the structural orientation and design of that space. And we anticipate receiving that feedback and writing specific recommendations to council and seeking council's direction on what types of public space use, including patios, would be appropriate in those flex zones that have been identified to council previously.
Clarification?
So clarification, thanks for letting me clarify so many times tonight. So we're going to apply one level of regulations to private property. And then theoretically, could be an entirely different set of regulations to the public property on the same street. I just think that that is. I, I think it's just, we're not knitting all of these things together and understanding the area in which these areas exist. We're separating them, and I, I just don't know how you do that. I use the Cove, but I just don't know how you can separate the public and the private and have two different levels of regulations. Staff gets to decide on one side, council gets to decide on another. I, I think this is, I think.
I'm trying to be cautious to not be debating the bylaw. We're, we're here to ask clarifying questions of it, but I hear your point.
Thank you.
And I think one of the things that came out at first reading that I think it's important to state again, though, was that you know, one of the challenges with us having the streetscape in Deep Cove be entirely public, where you can go to any table you want to, is the provincial licensing program. And so the provincial government, when they do your outdoor customer service area, it has to be segregated. Because they have to have control over liquor consumption within that space. And so you're going to, no matter what, under the current provincial regulation, end up with a little bit of a hodgepodge. Where some of the seats are going to be directly managed by their host business because they have a liquor license. And some of the other seats will be much more flexible, where you can show up with your brown bag sandwich and, 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 and sit in those other spaces. And so it's something that I, I heard is an undercurrent in some of the hearing pieces. It was something we talked about at first reading, but I, I thought I'd clarify that, that now, is that we don't have the ability, unless we were going to restrict them from having alcohol service in those public land spaces. That would be the only way we could actually make it common. But as soon as it's a liquor licensed outdoor customer service area, it will be segregated under the provincial legislation. Mr. Milburn, is that fair?
That's correct, your worship. And just to clarify, the decision council's making tonight will not affect Deep Cove either way. That's a conversation to come in the future with specific advice from, from staff with respect to the design of those flex spaces and their potential use in consultation with the neighbors. Thank you.
Fair ball, thank you very much. Okay. So what I'm going to do now is return back to the public. And so again, first, second time speakers are welcome to show their intent to speak again. Althea, yep, absolutely, welcome, come on back up. And then yes, we have a first time speaker as well tonight, so. But.
Okay.
Go ahead, you have five more minutes to address the council.
So as a result of listening to other stuff that's happened tonight, I can vouch for the fact that I knew nothing about this so-called survey happening that had eighty percent results in favor. The only time I ever saw any question like that is under the livable Deep Cove that I always participated in online, where I agreed to allow the places to have some patios. The second question he had there that he had an answer for, I never seen in my life. I am fairly computer savvy, but I do not participate all the time on things like Facebook and TikTok and all that because of so much spamming and email resulting from it. And I would have appreciated more than forty-eight hours notice, which is all I got pretty much to say the content of this meeting and that sign outside in the plaza that happened, I think, last Friday, maybe Thursday at the earliest, that headed me and I immediately rang and asked to speak. Or went online and asked to speak. So I can say that notice is not the greatest. I am somewhat upset to find that this livable Deep Cove is still all up in the air. I thought we'd pretty much rationalize what was going to happen. I now gather, no. I'm concerned, our patios underneath our businesses and our residences, they're all on district lands, they are public lands. I do not want to see things happening there at ten o'clock at night, even if they have a liquor license. So I don't mind them having a liquor license and corralling that space near the buildings. But I don't want to see that out on the flex space, out in the middle of the street anymore. I hope they don't get permission to put those awful things back up for the summer. Enough is enough for that. And so I, I'm, I'm fine with patios near the buildings. And if they have to be corralled in order to get a liquor license, but surely is there not some way that those outdoor areas on public lands can have a time limit? Because I noticed that those with the liquor license sometimes get a bit overboard going on eleven, twelve o'clock at night. You know, especially if there's things like the Olympics and Games were going on, people had TVs and they had all these people out there. And I live right above it, so I do want more control over the hours. I think ten o'clock is more than ample for anything to be going on right under residences at night. And I do not want to see corrals in that public space.
Thank you very much. Eric, next speaker from Arms Reach.
Thank you to your worship and council for hosting this discussion. My name is Eric Calco-Bullen, and I'm a lifelong resident of Deep Cove. I have family that have lived here since the early forties, and I've seen all the changes in Deep Cove for the better part of fifty years. I'm also one of the two owners of Arms Reach Bistro and have been since 2004. Our bistro is open from eleven to nine PM, and we've always made a conscious effort to ensure our patio is closed well within allowable district bylaws. It is clean and well-kept by our respectful staff. It's my understanding that in Deep Cove specifically, one of the lanes of traffic is to be removed to accommodate more foot traffic. A promenade, as I've heard it called, and a social space for the public to enjoy freely. If that area is provided to the public to enjoy until a district bylaws allow and beyond, because I'm sure they will, will it not become a space for people to remain well after allowable hours? Especially in the summer months, when they are more likely to loiter well into the evening. It's my opinion that we as business owners and, and operators would have the ability to clear those areas based on our business hours. And I believe that we could and should, as responsible and respectful operators, work with our closest neighbors and find a way to both make a living and enjoy living in our immediate community. This has always been our philosophy at Arms Reach. And we've always worked hard to not only respect the wishes of our neighbors, but also to contribute to the betterment of the building and the surrounding areas. If there are conflicts, I would hope and propose that we would have a procedure predetermined fines applied to businesses who have been proven to be negligent in their responsibilities. Thank you for allowing me to address the council.
Thank you for your comments, Eric. Is there anyone else wishing to address the hearing for a first or second time? One up. And I have a virtual hand raised as well from Dr. Cost. We'll get Dr. Cost moved over to the panel. But go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, I mean, it was just, it's been a good learning experience, actually, being here, learning about really what is being put forth. And it's, it's, what I come away from is, you know, there's approval process right now for a change to a bylaw that essentially doesn't have a public process involved. You know, and I was required to cut down a tree in my old house I lived in, had to get four neighbors to approve. And it's, it seems here that we've got a process, so once it's in place, it doesn't really have a mechanism for that engagement with the residents that are near it hand. And, and I would encourage the, you know, council district to consider some mechanism to do so. You know, business license where you're working indoors, that, that's one thing, outdoor stuff that, that does directly impact, you know, other people, residents. And Lower Glant is, it's a residential neighborhood, it's mixed-use neighborhood, but it's definitely a residential neighborhood. And so that piece, I think, you know, that would be my, my one thing to ask you guys is to please consider inclusion of that. I mean, I was going through the documents and there's lots of things about various regulations. It seemed it was very lean on, in terms of if you're going to have a situation where there could be patios either on public or private land, where the public doesn't, it's going to be there, it's going to get approved by a process by the council without public even knowing. And it's always tougher to have to accommodate those concerns after the fact than before. So that would be my note. I also wanted, wanted to note too, I mean, we, we have, you know, as a council, our strata building, we did submit a letter when we, we saw the early notices on this, like it was back in December, I think, to the district outlining some of our concerns. And in that letter, we actually asked for a direct meeting. We didn't receive one. I know everyone's busy, went into Christmas season, but I think there needs to be that, that process. To see if there's anything else here. You know, and, you know, there are a lot of elderly people in our building too, that maybe don't aren't as vocal. You know, it's a way, it's, as I said, here's one person, actually a voice of quite a number of people that have expressed serious concerns. And the other piece I think that we should consider is, is seasonality to outdoor patios. And we've talked a lot about hours, but, you know, through the winter months, if it's going to go ahead on some public property here, there's no need for patios all year round. I mean, a lot of us work from home, you're dealing with the noise outside, and then it's into the evening, it really isn't a big disturbance. So both hours and seasonal restrictions are something to consider that, that's all I got, thanks.
Thank you very much. Dr. Cost has joined us virtually, Dr. Cost, yeah, would you like to speak a second time?
Certainly, at least that. There's certainly a lot of confusion of information here, and if I'm confused, dare I say that there may be many others. Certainly, the whole mix of public and private in the documents, the formal bylaws, there's no mention of public property on this. Only in some obscure places you find, which people will not come across, will you find the idea of putting these kinds of uses on public property. I heard from staff that this bylaw only applies to restaurants and pubs. But certainly, they must apply to pastry shops and flower shops and retail food services. I, I know in Edgemont Village, there's a a butcher place that offers sandwiches, and we sit outside there, close to the door, where we can consume that. Is it even legal to just assist some businesses but not another? I thought a class must always be treated equitably. Certainly on the mill rate, it has to be, it's very explicit. But the implication was, you couldn't discriminate in any way, one business to another. Anyway, I cautioned council on such discrimination here. The sightlines being blocked to the adjacent single-family homes, how can you do that? I guess you would have to put something else somewhere, a fence, to do that. There's confusion there. I'm getting mixed messages about what you do about adjacent residential properties. And the appeal, of course, to council only was allowed if staff refuses to issue a business license. It's not vice versa, it's not a two-way thing. You know, if it's approved, no one can appeal to council. So I, I wish all references to the word public was erased from the record of this proposal. I find it extremely distasteful. And my input should be on the counter, as I should the staff response to that input. Seems reasonable that council should be aware of information the staff gives. council should be aware of information that staff gives, gives out in response to these questions. Not just get the questions, as if they're in time to be put in the public record, which certainly was the case given six days, although the actual response was only available for me for four hours or so before the meeting. So thank you very much for allowing me to speak the second time.
Okay, thank you very much, Dr. Cost. Another speaker here in the chamber. Is it Andrew?
Yes.
Andrew's hosted.
Thanks. I just want to speak further to Ms. Yo. Yo, sorry. On the closing times of patios, and I agree that ten o'clock would probably be reasonable, but you have to factor, and I heard eleven o'clock somewhere else inherently, and living where I live and sort of dealing with what I've been dealing with for a long time, I know that when that bar closes or when that patio closes, there are hanger-oners and stragglers. So you, you got to account for at least forty-five minutes, maybe even up to an hour before. If you say an eleven o'clock closing, it's going to be noisy till at least midnight, in my opinion, from my experience. So I just wanted to get that out, just something to think about for times. And I like what Eric had to say and how he and his business is dealing with things that, you know, makes sense. It sounds like he's working with everybody. I had one other thing to say, but I, of course, didn't write this down, so. I got four minutes, hang on. Am I allowed to ask questions?
It's a hearing.
Yeah. I just, to, you know, one of my main purposes for coming was because of the Raven and this, this patio that was put out there for COVID. And my concern about it being extended and becoming a permanent fixture, but I've heard twice now from Mr. Zhang that it's just, that's an impossibility. It's not going to happen the way things are written. And I just wanted absolute clarification on that.
And I, I think that's been asked and answered by staff in a couple of ways, but that the outdoor customer service in the back parking lot of the Raven would not comply with what is being proposed. It would have a direct collision with one of the requirements at least. Plus, also, the Raven already has an outdoor customer service area on the other side of the building.
Indeed. Okay, appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, would anybody else like to address the hearing for a first or second time? Okay, and first, second, or third time? I'd like to check back in with staff. Have there been any additional questions that have been submitted in the interim time?
Thank you, worship. No, there have not been any additional questions from council.
So I'm gonna.
One last third comment, I mean.
I need you to come up to the microphone and just, as you have spoken a couple of times, so yeah, don't repeat what you spoke about previously.
No, I won't. The last one, just because I wasn't clear. I just think from a strata, actually, using the public space for patios is not something we are in favor. Just for the record, the residents do not wish to have the public space used as patios. Private space is an entirely different.
Understood. Thank you very much. Okay, so since there are no questions to council, or to staff, I have to go through exhausting the public speakers list to some degree, and it's a little arctic, but for a first time, would anybody else like to address the hearing? Please, Eric, one up.
I omitted to thank.
Staff, thank you, staff.
There you go, part of the record. For a first time, would anybody else like to address the hearing? For a second time, would anybody else like to address the hearing? For a third and final time, would anybody else like to address the hearing? Okay, at this point, Mr. Clerk, I believe we have exhausted the public speaker's input at this time. I'm going to be recommending that this matter, I'll be moving that this return to a regular meeting of council for consideration of second and third reading. Is there a second or for that?
Happy to second there.
Yep, thank you very much. And I'll call the question on that. All those in favor, contrary-minded, motion carries. And so just checking in with the clerk, before I describe what closure means, can you just talk about when that's likely returned to second and third reading?
We do not have a date scheduled yet, your worship. We'll have to consult with the planning staff to see when they're prepared to bring it back.
Shooting for end of March, or what, like, when, when is it likely? I don't know, Yan Zhang, do you have an idea of approximately when you'll be prepared to bring it back for second and third? I get that that doesn't amount to notice, but.
Your worship, I think we're prepared to bring it back to early, early March, prior to the spring break.
Okay, okay. So people who have an interest in this matter, the council's going to do our best to have this many, this matter returned soon in early March. But that does mean you need to monitor, monitor the agendas as they come out to make sure of the night that it's going to come out. But we do have a night on March thirteenth that it is a probable for. We'll do our best to work towards that, but if it's, if it's, oh, sorry, yeah, you're right, that's the first week of spring break. So. Will, it'll be advertised in our agendas as we go forward. Sorry, I can't give you a more specific response than that at this time. So what does it mean when we close a public hearing? This was a quasi-judicial setting, set down in rules by the provincial government. When a matter is closed, it means that the council has heard all they're allowed to hear before they make their decision. And so members of the public are not actually allowed now to communicate with the counselors and tell them additional thoughts and ideas and things, and the council's not allowed to seek that out. They are allowed to talk to the staff to get clarifying comments on things that were presented as a part of the process, but they're not allowed to seek new information. And so this matter is now closed. And what that means is that until the matter is finally up for disposition and adoption, that the item is actually closed and not available for public discussion at this time. But I want to thank everybody for participating in the public hearing. I want to thank the staff for all of the work they did preparing the reports for tonight's consideration. Thank you to council for the deliberations that you're going to have going forward. To everybody, have a fantastic evening and a great week.